Thank you and good morning everyone, welcome to the Economic and Cultural Development Committee two thousand and twenty five, oh eight, this day, the sixteenth of September. Meeting started at ten o'clock fifty nine AM. All councillors in attendance except councillor Antonelli. So it's councillor Madison, deputy mayor Johnny, councillor Doyle, councillor Martin and councillor Madden. We do have a councillor apology, an actual leave of absence from the mayor. So I'd like to move that the mayor be granted leave of absence for this committee today. Do I have a second? Uh, thank you councillor Doyle, I'll put that to the vote, all those in favour. That's everyone that's in the room, noting councillor Antonelli is not still not in the room. Acknowledgement of country. Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and waters we share. We pay our respects to their elders past, present and emerging as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud people. Do we have, we'll move on to the declarations of interest on the agenda, has any members of the committee got anything to declare? No, thank you, we'll move to business outstanding, which there are none. Confirmation of minutes, do I have a mover for those minutes? Thank you councillor Doyle, second, uh, thank you councillor Martin. Any discussion? No, I'll put that to the, to the vote, all those in favour. That's unanimous, councillor Antonelli is in the room now and has voted. It's just the moving of the minutes councillor Antonelli, so that's all in, that's unanimous now, thank you. All good, we've got a drink, we've got to get fed councillor Antonelli. So our first officer's report on the agenda is the major community event sponsorship, Red Bank Plains Community Carols, Christmas Carols. Do I have any questions of the relevant officer? No?
Depends on what question you want, I was going to admittedly suggest that we make this the same as Brussels.
Yeah.
Which I believe was fifteen thousand over three years.
Yeah, I thought we just, in discussion, because we've already discussed the Brussels would be this, you know, the same sort of, and then we just change the recommendation in discussion? Yeah?
I imagine it'd be the exactly same questions and discussions with the officer, so I don't, not sure whether we need the officer, unless the officer feels the need.
Do you want to ask? I've got no questions of the officer.
I don't have any questions, Chair.
Sorry councillor Doyle, did you say no? I just might.
Yeah, sorry, no, I don't, I don't have any questions, as already has been mentioned, we had a recent discussion on this and advice from council officers around the Brussels carols, so I don't think any additional information, well certainly I don't need any additional information.
I agree with you, councillor Madden, did you have?
Just gonna say, Chair, at this point, before you ask for a mover and a second, uh, we have the opportunity to fashion the motion. And given councillor Antonelli has the lead on this, perhaps he might want to say how he wants the recommendation to be amended?
No, I think I, I can take the lead on it, you don't have to point out who needs to take the lead on it. We can do it, we've done it the other way as well, where we've moved it and then, and then we fashion the recommendation. So, yeah, I, I, I'll move it first, I do have a second and then we can, thank you councillor Doyle, so now discussion. Thank you councillor Johnny.
Just through you Chair, in relation to the, the recommendation in front of us, noting it's for a three-year period. So when we do fashion an amendment, if that is the, if that occurs, that, you know, whether we're talking about just this current application for this current year or like an ongoing agreement for the three years.
Yeah, I, I think we need to keep our uniformity in place and the Brussels one was three years, fifteen. And the in-kind sponsorship is, it's virtually the same, Red Bank Plains is four thousand and eleven dollars. The Brussels was four thousand eight hundred, so the in-kind is on par with each other, so I would think that the amendment would be just that within the recommendation, the twelve be turned to fifteen.
I'll second that, sorry, I'll support that as a second.
Support it.
Just amend the last paragraph there to total support, then it's forty five thousand.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Forty five, thank you.
Do you need a mover for the amendment, do you, the full amendment or?
Yeah, if you wanted to move it.
I think the mover and second would just agree.
Oh, okay, very good.
So did you move it councillor Doyle? Oh, okay, I said I moved.
Change, I said I would suppo, as the second, I support that amendment.
Okay, thank you. So any more discussion? We'll put that to the vote, all those in favour, that's unanimous and carried. Our third, item three, which is the Nicholas Street Precinct. August two thousand and twenty five Nicholas Street Precinct Project Control Group, I just have a something to point out, that the, the wording in the recommendation says July two thousand and twenty five. It should actually state August two thousand and twenty five, just in the, it was just probably just a typo and a.
Apologies Chair.
Yeah, oh, all good, we've picked that up, that's great. Do we have any, any questions for the relevant officer on this one?
Yeah, if I may, just to get clarification on the tables contained on page twenty two and twenty three.
Okay, if we can have the relevant officer approach.
Not while it's in the report.
What page, sorry councillor Antonelli?
Yeah, it's the two tables, it's contained on page twenty two of thirty six and twenty three of thirty six, just to get a full understanding of how those tables, what those tables mean.
Okay, if you can state your name and your title.
James Hepburn, precinct director for Nicholas Street, and good morning Chair, councillors.
So what was that again councillor Antonelli, what's the difference?
Just a full explanation.
Explanation between the two.
Tables, yeah, how they work, what's the?
So just to confirm councillor, we're looking at the financial resource implications table at the bottom of page twenty two. And then the table at the top of the following page.
Cash flow.
Cash flow, yeah. Where to start? We've been reporting on these tables ever since I've probably been at council. The, the far, the bottom right-hand column figure is the three hundred and eleven million dollars that the project on a capital expenditure basis is always reported back to. And that figure was last approved prior to the venue construction contract, starting on site. And essentially on a month-by-month basis, we've worked away through updating these figures as the capital expenditure has been deployed. So the current budget is essentially the approved budget in the first line item. Committed contracts and variations shows essentially the spend to date. And then that you've got the forecast against that, which is essentially the remainder that brings you up to the three hundred and eleven, so long story short, there's seven point nine million dollars unspent or uncommitted funds. And the table below just picks up the expenditure and as we have done every other month, we have run that on a four monthly basis, so this picks up May, June, July and August. And you'll see the cumulative project total starts to decrease as we're coming out of that space, which shows that obviously we're not in construction mode anymore and currently there aren't a huge amount of leasing deals working their way through, so the deployment of capital has got less and less and less.
With respect to line three in the page twenty two, line three of the, the table there, the retail project, is that the, basically the Eats area, is it the?
Retail project, it's two predominant line items will be Tom Walk or what we originally referred to as Metro, Metro B, and also the Eats project, yes.
Oh, so, so the other side of Nicholas Street.
Yes, so it would be Stella Rossa essentially, and that, that strip. And then also Tom Walk, which picks up Gelatine Snow, Terry White, leading down to the train station on Bell Street.
And just to clarify, the civic project would include obviously Tom A Place?
Yes.
Does that include the library as well, does it?
I believe it does include, it's the library, Tom Place, one Nicholas Street and all of the public realm.
Right, okay, very good. Just, just to clarify the breakdown, that's all, thank you.
Is that it councillor Antonelli?
Yes, it is, I'm satisfied, thank you.
I've just got a question on, can you tell me, you know, the building, that building across the ways? Sorry, I'm just trying to think, on, on top of the, sorry, could be anyways, could it? The one that's on top of the, the chemist, that one, that's the pharmacy, yeah, the Terry White, yeah, what's that building, what, what do we classify that as?
Well, immediately adjacent to Terry White Pharmacy, we're calling the Metro Project, originally it was known as Metro A and Metro B.
I'm just looking at the digital board.
Oh, so, so you're talking about the projection screen, yes, so essentially that's all that's above, the facade of the building is empty behind on the other side.
Yeah, so just in relation to the digital board, how do we go about, how do we schedule our marketing on the digital board? In relation to last night, I was walking through at about eight o'clock and it's still projecting stuff about August and we're nearly mid-September.
Okay, I'll have to, perhaps take that on notice and go look into that. It's regularly updated and tries its best to align with some of the festivals that are going on around the city. But more recently, we stepped away from, as you, many of you will know, sort of advertising some of the tenancies or their offers directly, due to the planning concerns.
Yeah, I was just, yeah, because I was walking through with somebody through, that was from Brisbane and they're the ones that picked it up and I was like, oh, wow, oops, oops, yes, oh, yeah. So I thought I'd just ask, you know, the scheduling, are we, you know, just to be a little bit on top of, especially dates when it's saying August and what we're.
I'll look into that councillor and perhaps provide a note through Sonia to advise on what's, what the scheduling looks like.
Great, awesome, any other questions, or councillor Martin?
Just on that, the next section, James, we used to go into a vote that's all been closed up now too, is that for any reason?
The.
Sort of like it was an arcade entry to?
Yes, that, that has been redundant for many years. And it is now part of a, a project where we're looking to see what the future of that building could be.
Yeah, they've just, it's only recently had a new facade put there.
Yeah, it's recently been skinned with a new vinyl, the facade goes up and comes down. We try our very best to activate it and last year, due to the numerous elections that rolled through earlier this year, we were able to you know, activate it in that way, at the moment, as a team, we'd like to consider other ways of activating it whilst it goes through its planning phases. And but that's a project that we'll be looking at.
Yeah, there's a, you know, there's a wall put there in front of it, you used to walk in and now there's a wall just been recently constructed last week or two.
Yes, there's a hoarding, yeah, essentially.
And for what reason, sorry?
Because the building behind is, is redundant and it's essentially started to collect a lot of different people hanging around in that area. In dark corners where people can't see, that become hard to manage and clean. And so we felt it better to try and advertise the city and brand Nicholas Street and just improve how it presented itself to the, to the rest of Nicholas Street.
Any further questions or? No, thank you, thank you, Mr Hepburn.
Thank you.
For that report, thank you councillor Doyle, second. Thank you councillor Johnic, deputy mayor, acting, acting mayor Johnic. Any further discussion? No, I'll put that to the vote, all those in favour adopting that report, that's unanimous and carried. So now we, there was a late report, hopefully people got, members got that. A late report, item four, which is the Nicholas Street Precinct, approval of an agreement for lease for tenancy K two of the venue, so I might, because I've got questions, so there's a lot of confidential, because it's a, it's a lease agreement, so I'll move that we go into a closed session, that in accordance with section two five four J, three G of the local government regulations two thousand and twelve, the meeting move into closed session to discuss item four titled Nicholas Street Precinct, approval of an agreement for lease for tenancy K two venue, thirty seven Nicholas Street. Do I have a second? Uh, thank you councillor Martin. We've moved into a closed session. Sorry, all those in favour, that's unanimous and carried, so I looked at vote and I was like. Oh, sorry, all those in favour, um that's unanimous and carried. So I looked at vote and I was like. Oh, sorry, all those in favour, um that's unanimous and carried. So I looked at vote and I was like.